Again, welcome to the weekly Lawrence City Commission meeting. And first on the agenda tonight is a proclamation. Is there a person here to receive the proclamation from Altrusa? Thank you. If you'll come up and say your name and tell us a little bit about your organization.
Yeah. My name is Karen Wykoff and I'm with the Altrusa International Organization, which is a philanthropic group that focuses on literacy.
Would you like for me to read the proclamation at this time?
Please.
Okay. Whereas there are over 796 million adults worldwide who lack the literacy skills needed to obtain good jobs or to actively participate in the education of their children, and it is estimated that more than 75 million children do not attend school and many more attend irregularly or dropouts, and over 150,000 people in the state of Kansas over the age of 16 lack the ability to read or write. And whereas Altrusa International Incorporated, an organization of executive and professional women committed to community service, has pledged to work towards worldwide literacy. And whereas the community of Lawrence has residents of all ages in every neighborhood who are functionally illiterate, and whereas Altrusa International Incorporated of Lawrence has provided annual scholarships for women, and the underwriting sponsor of the River City Reading Festival has supported New York Elementary School with a large donation of books, has provided books to Willow Domestic Violence Center, and First Step House has provided large print books to Lawrence Senior Services, and has implemented the New Born Book Project at Lawrence Memorial Hospital, and thereby encourages reading and the promotion of lifelong literacy for the residents of Lawrence. Now therefore, I, Robert J. Shum, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby proclaim September 5th through the 11th, 2012 as International Literacy Week, and urge all citizens of this community to continue working together addressing literacy needs in Lawrence and Douglas County. Thank you for your help and congratulations.
Thank you.
On the agenda, we may have some public comments. It seems like that's the nature of our agenda tonight. So a couple of things to remind you. First, if you'll kindly take out your cellphone and switch it to silence, that would be grateful. And secondly, each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes. If you can complete, if you can complete your statement in less than five minutes, we would appreciate it so we get to listen to everyone. However, if you do go to four minutes and 30 seconds, I will ring this really beautiful chime. That simply means your time's almost up and you have to complete your sentence, and please sit down, make room for the next person. Make sure mine's off. All right. First on the agenda, the regular agenda is the consent agenda. And are there any items on the consent agenda any member of the commission would like to remove for a separate vote and discussion? Okay. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the public would like to remove for a separate discussion and vote? Okay. Seeing none, hearing none. In addition to the stated consent agenda, I will add to the consent agenda claims to vendors, 232 claims, the amount of $12,432,669.57. Is there a motion to approve?
A.
Amix Cromwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries 5-0. Next item will be the city manager's report.
Mayor, members of the commission, the only item that I've got on this week's report is in relation to the Vermont parking garage, the parking garage that will be built as part of a library project. As you know, we are proposing that an additional 72 parking spaces be constructed, and we're proposing that a special assessment benefit district be created to pay for those additional spaces. What we're doing here in September is we're going to have a couple of public meetings at the Art Center on Tuesday, September the 18th, and Thursday, September the 20th. Both of those are going to be 7:30 in the morning. The purpose of that is going to be to walk the attendees through a brief fact sheet that we're finalizing right now that will explain the proposed special assessment benefit district. People get a chance to see what the proposed assessments would be, and then respond to any questions and comments about that. Next week, you're going to adopt a, consider adopting a resolution that would set September 25th as the public hearing date for that consideration of a resolution. So you'll have that on your September 25th agenda. You can obviously approve it or not approve it. Then we'll go through the process there whereby property owners would have an opportunity to sign a protest petition that could kill the special assessment benefit district. And then also, when we get the bids on the actual parking garage addition, that bid package, you'll also review those and make a determination about whether to proceed. So whether or not we proceed with this additional parking will rest with you partly, but also with the property owners through the benefit district process. So that's the process that we've outlined. We'd be happy to respond to questions. We're still finalizing the resolution, but I think it's in pretty good shape, and we'll go from there.
Questions on it? Okay. Thank you, Dave. Now we go to the regular agenda, and we have four items on the regular agenda tonight. One of them is an update of the Sports Village Recreation Center, and then there's three land use questions or ordinances for consideration. And early on in this process, I indicated, and I think the commission agreed informally, not by vote, but that we would not proceed with any kind of rezoning in its final state until after we were sure that we had a project that we could, that we would vote up, and one that we were sure of, what it looked like, how it was going to be designed, what the functionality was going to be, and the whole fact spectrum that would be agreeable to us. So we're not at that point yet, and so probably what I want to do is have staff go over the land use items. We'll listen to them. The commission can have a discussion, and the public can interact with commentary, as well as an update of where we're at on the Sports Village and the work that the staff's done. So what we're going to do first is have a review of a little bit of a historical timeline of where we've been, so that everybody has the same understanding of where we started and where we are today. Then staff will present the land use questions, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the text amendment, and then the rezoning request and what that rezoning category is going to look like. And then the city manager will address the sports concept agreements and where they're at at this time. After that, we'll open it all up for public comment. You can, you can pick whatever flavor you like and talk about it, and we'll listen to you, and then more than likely, we'll just defer this to another day and see where we go at that time once we have more information. So any questions on the commission about this? I should say continue it to another day, not defer it. So, all right. So do we have staff presentation on the timeline?
Bernie Shaw is going to come up and provide us with background on this. I think one of the key things is we've gotten into some of the details, is we don't want to forget why we're talking about this project and this recreation center. So we're going to talk just a little bit about that.
Mayor, commissioners, I'm going to have Roger put up, we've got a little short PowerPoint presentation here that we've revised a little bit. We've seen it before, but just as a reminder, like you, we get phone calls from, from people that use our services, people that are new to town, are just starting to use our services, and the question's been asked many times of why is it taking so long to get a recreation center? We know the need, we've known it for years, and then other people are saying, well, it's moving way too fast, you know? There's a lot of things we need to look at and consider. And I just wanted to up, update a little bit and review and remind people of where this project and, you know, this journey has been on the recreation center and the true need for this recreation center for the community ability, or for the community. Clear back in 1994, we all know that the sales tax was passed, and in part for Parks and Recreation facilities and programming. Some of the major improvements that were done shortly after this in 96 and on, the Lawrence Aquatics Center was completed, indoor aquatic center in 99 and 2000, and just recently paid off in the last year of those bonds. Prairie Park Nature Center was built, East Lawrence Recreation Center had a complete renovation, the Cotton Lake Adult Softball Complex was built. Additions at Eco Bend, numerous bike paths, which has always been and trails around town, one of the high priorities for this community. The Holcomb Recreation Center and complex had major renovations done to it. Complete park developments and master plans were completed, and improvements were made on numerous other parks. Youth baseball and softball complexes at Holcomb and YSC had major improvements done. And of course, the Lawrence Outdoor Aquatics Center had major improvements done to it. And we continue, and something we will continue to do is keep all of our, our projects updated and maintenance. We, we put in $400,000 to $500,000 a year in sales tax money into just maintenance projects on our facilities. And as I said before, most of these projects, or a lot of these projects, were bonded, and they have paid off. And now are, what we're wanting to do is, we've talked about for years, is second generation funding, enrolling those funds of that sales tax back over into new projects. And at this time, that new project that we are talking about obviously is a new recreation center. The last new recreation center we built here was in 1988, which was Holcomb. That's nearly 25 years ago. Population's grown about 32% since then, about 29,000 people. And since that time, my staff and I, which I've been around before that, can tell you that our programs have grown much more than that. They've quadrupled or better in that same length of time. Our facility shortage has been here for a long time. Statistics show that for this size of community, Lawrence community, we're about 18 to 20 gyms behind what public facilities we should have. I mean, we have three gyms basically that we control. That doesn't mean we don't use every school gym that we can get our hands on, most of them being elementary gyms, but they work well for, for practices, but for games, when you have wall-to-wall court, it doesn't work that well. So, and that's not something we're going to give up if this facility comes, because we still need those. Just an example of, of some of the programming deficiencies we have, like our rec basketball program, we have between 1,000 and 1,200 kids. This isn't a rec program. And over the years, because of lack of gyms and us not wanting to turn kids away that want to play, we went from 10 or 12 games a year to six games a year and one practice. At least by having less games, we're still not turning kids away, but they're not participating the way they were a few years ago. Plus they, now they have to be done by December with basketball in order for us to have indoor soccer leagues. So being able to have a facility like we're talking about, have the opportunity for kids that want to play basketball on a regular season, October through March, would be great. Our, our competitive leagues are the same way. We actually lose kids there. We turn them away because their team formed, they come in, they sign up, when it's full, it's full, they go somewhere else. We don't know where, but Johnson County, Topeka, so we just don't have room for everyone. And of course, another biggie is, we just don't have a youth volleyball program. Every place else around us has huge volleyball programs. And, and we have one that we started a year ago on a Sunday afternoon for fourth and fifth graders, and that's all the space we have for it. So that's something that'd just be huge, and that's only a couple of programs. In 2006, the PLAY study was commissioned by the City of Lawrence, Lawrence School District, Douglas County, and the Lawrence Chamber to identify our recreational needs here in Lawrence. Five recommendations come out of that. The construction of an indoor fieldhouse, a district sports complex, which we know what happened to that. The school basically made a decision that they didn't want to do the complex, instead went back to the two high schools, upgraded those to game facilities, and then of course the upgrades to the YSI complex. The only need that hasn't been addressed from that survey, and that is the fieldhouse to this date. And gym space situation has continued to worsen, as I said before. We've actually, in this community, since this report, lost six and a half more gyms. Not community gyms, but sport-to-sport closed. Community individuals was using that. When that closed, they come to us saying, we need someplace to play. Well, we didn't have someplace to play, so now those teams have either disformed or are someplace else playing as competitive teams. Our access to Robinson Gymnasium, after about 28 years of using gyms up there for gymnastics, we lost that opportunity. So we had to salvage our gymnastics program and use a half a gym at East Lawrence Center that was being used for multipurpose and community events and things like that. So there's our six and a half gyms. And of course, we've had reduced access to our school facilities, not because the schools are not great to work with, they are, and we use everything we can, but just access, additional organizations needing facilities, and, and just times that we just can't get into them. And of course, as I said before, our increased enrollment has continued to go, and large space, we're using every large space church, every large space organization that we can get into at this point. On something I thought was interesting, this is the drawing that came out of a, a concept drawing from the PLAY, and when it was completed in 2006, '07. And it shows six gyms, which are 12 cross gyms, et cetera, gymnastics, multipurpose, of course concessions, locker rooms, some, some meeting rooms, and 100,266 gross square feet in this facility that was recommended at that time. What it's missing compared to the, for the, the center that, and the fieldhouse that we're recommending, is a turf area, two, two high school gyms or four junior high cross gyms, four-lane track, the wellness area, the aerobic dance exercise area, weight and cardio areas. So when you start adding all that up, it kind of gets up to the same square footage of that 180,000 that we're talking about now. And at that time, this facility was going to cost about $21.3 million to construct. So it was very interesting to see that correlation between six years ago and now. Beyond the 2006, Lawrence Parks and Recreation continued to seek public input on the needs. And in 2009, we hosted many public meetings. We also did surveys, and, which only continued to garnish, you know, 1,000 replies, and, and those responses were all yes, positive, that gym space is our number one need for the Parks and Recreation Department. In the map, it kind of shows, and we've seen this before, where our current gyms are. Community building, East Lawrence Center and Holcomb. North and west, we virtually have no gymnasium. We have the aquatic center out around Overland and Waukerusa, but no gymnasium or recreational space in those areas. Then in October of 2011, the commission hosted a study session and reviewed the feasibility of moving forward with a recreation facility in the northwest quadrant of the city. The preliminary site was the city-owned property, which was about 40 acres, at the Overland and Waukerusa area, kind of there west and behind Walmart. Then we did conceptual center, fieldhouse. Then in October, November 2011, we interviewed fundraising firms and architectural firms to actually do, begin preliminary plans on this center on that site. And then the commission tabled the, the plans to hire firm, to hire the firms for those interviews due to a new opportunity that was presented on November 8th at the city commission meeting. That opportunity was the Suata's proposed 50 acres of land at the intersection of Sixth Street and K-10 as potential site for the recreation center. And that shows the circle and the site, again, along with our three existing centers. At that time, we began thinking about this size of a center, the 100,000 to plus center. So we started researching, you know, New Century Fieldhouse, the recreation centers in Olathe and Shawnee and a number of places, and comparisons to other Topeka and Kansas City facilities, plus the Frisco Fieldhouse in Texas. The collaboration with the city, multiple developers, and KU is resulting in a site plan that would create a tremendous community asset that probably wouldn't be possible without a number of these partners involved. First and foremost, we want to address the pressing recreational needs that we have recognized for years in Parks and Recreation and the people that, and that use our programs. We've had numerous people on committees that now their kids are grown, and, and they're, they actually have kids that are participating in programs now since we've started talking about this. And of course, the tournaments in a facility like this could create some additional economic impact for the city. Just real quick, I, we did a memo back on August 2nd that just outlines some of the programs that are possible, and there's just so many that I'm not going to address them, but there's just a wide range of ages and demographics that we can reach with this type of a facility. Obviously, new recreation and competitive sport programs, expanded gymnastics area will let us have more classes in different ages. Partnering with other agencies, I think is big, the USD 497, other agencies like the Boys and Girls Clubs, and, and Big Brothers and Big Sisters for after-school programs and the like. Plus our 50-plus programming opportunities. It's this, you know, and one thing, it continues to get this, all kinds of, this excitement is the Eighth Mile Walking Track. There's no other indoor track, jogging track that is public in the city, and this would be controlled temperature year-round that I think will just be a tremendous opportunity for people. Plus, things that people don't think of is, by doing this, our centers are just booked solid in our neighborhoods, and by doing this, we'll be able to lessen some of that strain on our neighborhoods and give them back to the community some, and have more open gym time, more rental time for your community groups and things like that, which will be a tremendous asset, not only for the neighborhoods, but for the general population. Just, you know, some of the daytime program, we'd have daytime program for 50-plus that has the opportunity to come in, numerous different times for that, programming of all kinds, after-school programs that we don't have a lot now, but we've already talked with organizations that would love to partner with us and be a, a part of that. And of course, our evening and primetime programs, it will give us so much more gym time and, and time to do that. Plus the weekend tournaments and clinics and craft shows and open gyms, and something we, even if we have a tournament, we're planning, you're going to have a rec center still available out there, and a lot of opportunity to do things. There may be occasions where a large tournament may close down a gym for a while, but we're still going to have so many different opportunities to be able to do that. And then I'm just going to leave it at that and show the site plan, and obviously Scott and others are going to start talking about the land development, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions for Bernie Shaw? Okay, very well. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner Scott McCullough with the Planning Office. Mayor, Commissioners, the land use entitlements, like all other aspects of this proposal, have received a good deal of public process. The city commission initiated these items with the owner's consent so that a complete land use package accommodating a regional sports village concept and other compatible commercial uses could be considered at one time with all the necessary comprehensive plan support, development code language, and rezoning available for your consideration. You're familiar with the project overview, concentrated on the comprehensive plan issues. The site currently is designated as a CC 400, which is a community commercial, 400,000 square feet of commercial retail. We have today in our code a CC 200 and CC 400, so while it may appear like a big step to go to 600, it really is just utilizing, building upon the existing policies and code language of the two and 400 to get to the 600. We also have a CR, a community regional designation, which is 1.5 million worth of, of retail, and we'll get to that in a little bit. As the property is undeveloped, the subject property of the northwest corner of K-10 and Sixth Street, it must progress through the development approval process. Here we've outlined what that process is for you. Of course, the annexation was completed in May. The comprehensive plan, text amendment, zoning are up for your consideration this evening and in future weeks. We are processing the plat, and we have, we're in conceptual site planning with adjacent and nearby neighbors through at least two different neighborhood meetings to date. These are the documents needing revision for the comprehensive plan update. Horizon 2020 creates the overarching CC 600 policies, and then we have more specific nodal plan and west of K-10 plan that create the very detailed designations of land use pattern. This plan, the nodal plan for the intersection, is actually being deleted through this process as it is being incorporated into the west of K-10 plan. The Chapter 6 modifications essentially create the CC 600 policies, borrowing many again from the CC 200 and CC 400 policies, and then we, then we just simply employ them via the map at the intersection of K-10 and Sixth Street. Again, this is our existing map 6-1 of Horizon 2020 that utilizes the different kinds of community commercial, community regional, and our neighborhood planning nodes, commercial nodes and/or corridors. And so this would essentially color this orange and designate it as the CC 600. The specific policies that are highlighted in Horizon 2020 include that any CC 600 center should be located at the intersection of two state or federally designated highways, that they have a maximum retail component of 600,000 gross square feet, that 90% of that 600,000 square feet is located on two corners of the intersection, that no more than two commercial buildings over 100,000 gross square feet located on any one single corner, that mixed-use centers are encouraged in these areas, that a nodal or area plan be completed before development occurs, and that our commercial design guidelines are employed in the district. So if we cap retail uses at our commercial nodes, then we need to know which uses are retail. And what we are proposing is to utilize the North American Industrial Classification System. It's what our development code utilizes, and this slide reflects sort of what would be included, what uses and types of retail are included within that system. And so you'll see that virtually every kind of retail and food and beverage sales that you can think of is included. And then what's not included in terms of some of the commercial service uses, educational services, and accommodation, including, including hotels. Hotels, those uses don't go toward the maximum retail caps on any one property in the district. Turning to the, so that's the Chapter 6 policy framework for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Turning to the west of K-10 plan specifically, what we did here is reflect the current land use approvals for the Mercado property and even other properties in the district. We provided language, basically, including the CC 600 future land use category. A little bit on what's on the books today. This is the land use designation of the current nodal plan, again, which we are deleting and incorporating into the west of K-10 plan. This came first around 2003 and had all four corners of the intersection of K-10 and Sixth Street, US 40. The west of K-10 plan, when we did this in 2009, picked up on the west side and borrowed, as its assumptions, all of the land use designations of this nodal plan, did not include the east side here. And essentially, what the nodal plan and west of K-10 plan did was designate this for office, warehouse, and industrial designations. It was but one land use pattern that is appropriate in the area. The proposed land use designation for this, this node of commercial would designate the majority of it as CC 600 commercial, but also leaves some civic institutional uses, a little bit of office, warehouse, industrial, does employ green space buffering to the north and south of, of the west side, employs more of a transitional designation between commercial, multifamily, single family on the north and south sides on the east side of the district. This slide depicts what we showed the planning commission in terms of reflecting all of the land use plans and designations of the area today on the book. So this would be the proposed node here, and then what surrounds it, you can see, is transitioning out into medium and higher residential down to single-family districts surrounding this, this activity node. Horizon 2020 requires a project-specific retail market study for projects that would create 150,000 square feet or more of commercial space. This comprehensive plan and rezoning effort would create an additional 200,000 square feet of retail potential in the local market. So staff- So staff completed an analysis for the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning request. The indicators seem to reflect a market of potentially declining health. Supply is outpacing demand. The vacancy rate for all approved projects exceeds 8%, and the retail square footage per capita would exceed standards if all the projects approved were constructed. And that's a big if because we're simply not seeing that today. If the assumptions are that all retail is built and vacant when approved and that any new retail will cannibalize on existing retailers, we think this particular project in Comp Plan Amendment is unique in that the, the, the sports village itself will be a draw into the community and would create demand by itself. Also, we're just not witnessing since the, since the recession, any speculative commercial development. And so I think it's, you know, the, the assumption that everything on the books has to be looked at as vacant may be taken with great scrutiny. Staff is cognizant of these indicators. We pay attention to them. We address them. You see them with every potential like this that comes before you. But we do find from our perspective that the retail market, including the downtown area, will not be harmed with this increase in potential retail use at this location. Turning to the text amendment, I just have the one slide because essentially, the text amendment implements the, the CC 600 designation of the comprehensive plan. Again, we have existing 200 and 400 zoning standards. We're just building into that. We're plugging in the CC 600 category, and we're using all the same uses of our other community commercial land uses. Turning to the rezoning, the third land use item you have this evening, we're all very familiar with where this site is located, approximately 146 acres here at the northwest corner of K-10 and Sixth Street. We studied with the Planning Commission the existing uses of the area. This is an urbanizing area. If you look at our land use plans for the area, but today it is, it is not exactly urbanized. We have the, the rural estate lots to the north. We have ag and estate homes to the west. We do have a church and daycare facility to the south, which has a first phase of development completed. It is by condition required to enter into the city, annex into the city for future phases of that development. Of course, we have a number of approved zoning and plats and unapproved development at this, at this corner of the intersection. And of course, Mercado has all of its land use approvals today. From the outset, we worked to make sure that our northwest corner was compatible with the recreation sports village concept, which is the driving land use of this corner. And so we worked to identify recommended uses that would enhance and be compatible with that use. And you have all this in your, in your packet, so I won't dwell on any of these. What may be more important to, to look at is what's not permitted, what's been proposed to not be permitted. Because these are uses that we found with the discussion with the owner and the Planning Commission to not be compatible with the sports village concept. And so you can see that many of them have to do with the aesthetics of the area or how it acts from a commercial standpoint. For example, prohibiting large retail establishments of 100,000 square feet or more. We found that this node already has that entitlement at the Mercado site, so we didn't find a need for it at this site. We don't think it enhances the concepts of the sports village. Other uses not permitted, and there are many here. And so we are hopeful and have, have not heard very much in the contrary through the public process that we're off the mark here with our land uses. And if we are, we're happy to hear about that. We and the Planning Commission recommend approval of all three of your items. There is a valid protest petition on the rezoning, and so that will require a four out of four-fifths vote from the Commission to approve. And I would also ask that at some point in your proceedings tonight, on the rezoning request itself, that you, that you declare any ex parte communications you've had regarding the rezoning request, not necessarily the entire project, but on the, on the rezoning itself. And with that, I am happy to take questions or turn it over to John Wilkins for a little more detail of the project itself.
Scott, do you want the ex parte contacts tonight or prior to a vote on this?
I-
Or, or both times? I don't-
My turn to our city attorney.
We'd recommend that you make those before you take public comment so that if anyone wishes to speak or address any of the points that were raised, they'll have an opportunity to offer that information at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
John, do you have a PowerPoint or?
Okay. I'm John Wilkins with Gould Evans. I'm here with Paul Warner from Paul Warner Architects. Thought I'd just kind of update you of some of the activities since we last met on August 7th, go through a few of the details. I won't read through the entire packet and although if you have questions, we can drill down on that. And, and then I was going to have Paul just kind of update you on a couple of the modifications on the site plan since then. So I think first of all, since we met last, our, the main things that we've been working on was, one, we did some detailed cost estimates. We reached out to a third-party general contractor, Crossland Construction, and provided them with the basis of design, the specs, asked them to give us their opinion on costs on that. We've talked with engineers and had them provide reports so that we could kind of drill down on the details of the mechanical, electrical systems. We've worked with your staff, the Parks and Rec staff and the Design Review Committee, and talked about many of the details of, of the rec center itself. And we've also continued to work with KU on detailed planning for the soccer track complex and how it kind of relates to here. So first, just from a budget standpoint, just to update you on that, we did do two estimates, the estimate that, that we put together and the estimate that Crossland. And from that, based on the basis of design that I'll talk about, we estimated the total price to construct this, if you were to bid this out, ranged from 22 and a half million to $25 million. So I think the important thing there is that we did go out and get an independent opinion on those, on those costs. So as we just go through it, the, the first main component of this is the fieldhouse. And, and I think we've, we've talked through the detailed plans on that before, but the important thing to note here is that it is fully equipped with all the volleyball and basketball hung from the ceiling, electronically controlled to come down. So it, I think, I think we've kind of worked through that, 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 that the fieldhouse kind of meets all aspects of what your Parks and Rec staff are, are interested in for, for that component. We also put estimates in there so that you could just understand the value of some of those components. As we've talked about before, it does have a floating wood floor system, and it is divided up into kind of four groups of courts, which enables your, the Parks and Rec department to actually refinish those courts separately instead of taking down the whole, you know, all the courts at, at once. Does have gym divider curtains. And in this case, we're looking at curtains that are solid down low and mesh above as they go east-west. And the curtains that, that divide the courts north-south are actually, are open above so that you've got good sightlines from the, from the balcony above so you can see all those courts. And we've been working with the porter, porter reps on that. As we've talked about before, it does have a, the wellness center is shelled space. We have not met with Lawrence Memorial Hospital on that, but that would still be an activity to take place in the future and figure out how that component kind of ties in to the, the fitness cardio area in this area. The turf area, we've talked about before, is a 90 by 240-foot clear area. We have kind of nailed down that it would be, the lines on the turf would be such that you could have three 60 by 80 soccer fields that allows spectator seating at the floor level. It'll also be striped so that you could provide one larger 75-foot wide by 175 to 200-foot long indoor soccer field for that activity. Gym da, gymnastics just accommodates all the, all the various components that we've talked about before. As Ernie mentioned before, does have an eighth of a mile track. As we've talked about, it's got four, four lanes, one six-foot wide walking plus two three-foot wide jog trails. We spent a lot of time talking about the various finishes of all these various spaces. And I think we've settled on that we're using a rubber synthetic surface for the walk jog trail, for the dance aerobics, and four portions of the fitness cardio. And the depth of those rubber varies depending on the particular use, but the depths that we have in this packet are the recommended thicknesses that you would use for those Think most of the rest of this stuff, we've talked about in terms of the individual spaces. We got into a little bit more detail on some of the site, talking about where we are irrigating, the extended landscaping, those various components. Talked a little bit about the parking lot lighting, looking at LED full cutoff pole lighting, which is consistent with what the, what the city's using at their other, other Clarified that, that we're painting all the, the exposed structure within the, within the facility, so some of those details. And then on the, the mechanical system, we spent a lot of time talking about that, and there's a memo in your, in your packet, which I won't go into depth on, but the recommendation is to use constant volume packaged rooftop units with energy recovery, which will help with your operating costs, and humidity control. So for a rec, rec center like this with, with wood floors and all that, that is a, that is an important component. Got into details of how we're distributing the ductwork and how we're handling return air. So in some of the spaces like the turf, trying to get the return air down low so that we can kind of pick up the, the particulates from down at the turf, turf level and deal Paul, you just want to brief him real quick on the site?
Yeah. Just do it from here. Yes. Okay. Paul Warner, Paul Warner Architects. John and I were trying to figure out when the last time you guys saw the site plan. So I, I think this is pretty close for everybody. A couple, some are really minor changes, but as we've been working through it, the pond, you may have noticed, is switching, shifting a little bit to the west because that's actually, we surveyed the entire site, that's actually the lower part of the site. So it'll work better at that location. The developer who's proposing to build this is actually, we determined that's going to be a wet bottom pond now. So I think we're making more strides to make this more of a park-like setting. We are still trying, trying to strike the balance between the number of parking spots and the number of parking spots that can park on grass. And we're sticking with the 800 parking number, 350 in front of the building, 450 spread out to the east. You also are probably familiar that the, the size may be changing, so this may be growing by 10 acres. So we actually look forward to that and look forward to taking another look at if we have everything in the right spot. As Scott mentioned, we, we've talked with the neighbors several times. We continue to want to do that. We want to meet with staff as soon as we have this boundary kind of laid down, but we feel pretty good about it. The other thing that's important to note is the berm along the north is still intact. You know, we're talking roughly 20 feet tall, planning with evergreens to provide a, a good buffer to the neighbors to the north. We also, this plan shows a walking biking trail around the perimeter and around several of the locations on site. We think that's a good addition as well. And back to, you know, trying to get this more to a park-like setting as much as we can. And as John mentioned, we continue to work with KU weekly on the track and field and the soccer facility. So we'll continue to do that as well once we have this boundary kind of nailed down a little bit more. But progress as, as we, as we go, so. That's all I have.
Questions for the architect? I have one question for you. Along through this design work, are we at the point where we feel like the way it's going to be constructed, that it will be able to be certified as a lead structure?
We, with, with the discussions on the mechanical system that we kind of reached, we believe we can, yes.
It's a minor point, but I'm wondering if we can actually have some language in here that speaks to the, an area in the, and guessing it would be in the front, but almost a mini visitor center type thing? Because we really do want to, you know, promote Lawrence and whether it's just a place for events to be promoted, the rest of Lawrence be promoted, perhaps even a pay, pay-to-play area for companies to actually advertise in Lawrence. But I think we really want to showcase that. I've heard talk that we're aware of that, but I just, I think it'd be good to actually plan it and have, have that mentioned in here, how we intend to incorporate that into the public space somewhere.
I think that's a good idea.
Thanks.
Mike?
John, on the site plan itself, the arrangement of the buildings and the track and, and soccer facility, how was the determination made on, on our building being at the back end of the property?
Well, we, we looked at it, we looked at it further to the east, Mike, and that's kind of the low, low part of the site. And so one of the concerns was as, as visitors are kind of coming into Lawrence, kind of what their first impression of this whole site would be. And so the lower, the, the building was with all the rooftop units and all that, there was some concern that you were actually looking at the roof. You know, we actually modeled the whole site, kind of looked at it from up at Sixth Street and the South Lawrence trafficway, looked at what that kind of view would be. So that was kind of one concern. That's actually the high point of the site, which helps. So as you kind of place a civic building, you're kind of, you know, approaching up to it, looking at the front, we think that kind of fits better on there. So I think that was, that was a large part of it. Some of the other things, we're just kind of working with the, with the grading and, you know, there's an existing kind of stream bed on there. And so when we actually, when we actually started with the site planning on here, we, we kind of overlaid that stream bed there and kind of placed the soccer and the track and the rec center so that we could kind of work, work with that a little bit so that had a little bit to do with it.
The, the other part of that too is that helps buffer the neighbors to the north from, from activity or lights, try to keep parking to the south as much as possible. So there's, the building is not going to be anything but peace and quietness as opposed to, if you have, the more people you have back there, so it was-
By, and we talked to the neighbors about this, but by setting the, by setting the building kind of into the grade a little bit, there's an 18, 20-foot drop from the west property line to the east face of the fieldhouse there. We can kind of bury the, the western half of that rec center into the grade. So the, the height of the walls that are on the north and the west are more like 14, 15 feet instead of 35, 36 feet. and the west are more like fourteen, fifteen feet instead of thirty-five, thirty-six feet. So we think that, you know, fits a little bit better relative to the neighborhood. But that was the logic, but we certainly looked at, I know there's been at least twenty options for how this can fit, so.
Anything else for the architect team? Okay, thank you. And now Dave Corliss will give us a rundown on...
Mayor, what I wanted to do was ask Gary Anderson, his partner with the law firm Gilmore and Bell, who's serving as our bond counsel for this project, to just brief you all on the general structure of the arrangements that we have and the status of the agreements to date and respond to any questions that you might have about that as well. And I think that'll pretty much complete the process. Be happy to respond to general questions as well, talk about how we're moving the project forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner Gary Anderson, Gilmore and Bell. As you all know, this project has been evolving as we have been working on it, and there are a number of partners involved, which also sort of complicates the relationship. You know, the current structure of the transaction is that the city would enter into a development agreement with the Bliss Foundation of Lawrence, and the city would enter into a donation agreement with the property owners. Both those documents are currently being negotiated, and the intent would be that the development agreement, the donation agreement would be signed at some point in the future after they are finalized and after the commission and the other parties have approved those documents. And then we would move forward to the next step. The next step being that the plans and specs for the facility would be complete. The plans and specs would be bid, and there would, the Bliss Foundation would come back to the city with the proposed cost of the facility. And if it was within the parameters that had been agreed to, the project would proceed. If it was outside those parameters, the city would have the opportunity to either renegotiate the transaction or to not move forward. The donation agreement would be tied to that arrangement, so the property would not be donated to the city until such time as everyone was ready to proceed. In addition, as far as the actual construction and financing, the property would be donated to the city. Originally, we were talking about fifty acres. Now there's discussions that that might be expanded to include an additional ten acres, so it might be sixty acres at this point. The city would enter into a ground lease with the Bliss Foundation, and then the Bliss Foundation would finance the construction of the recreation center, lease it back to the city for an agreed-upon payment stream for twenty years, and at the end of the twenty years, the city would terminate the relationship with the Bliss Foundation and would own the recreation center free and clear. With respect to the soccer and track facility, there would be a separate ground lease to an entity called Bliss Sports, who would then sublease that facility to KU Athletics. So you can see by the number of partners involved in this transaction, it sounds like a fairly complex deal, and it is. There's a lot of details and a lot of items that we are working through. We're making, I think, good progress on the documents. I am meeting with the landowner and their council tomorrow afternoon to discuss the donation agreement. So I think as we proceed this week, hopefully by the end of this week, early next week, we'll have a good sense that hopefully we're in pretty good shape on the documents. As I said, you know, the key things right now are the donation agreement and the development agreement. But from the standpoint of the city, which is our client, I think it's important that these other documents, these lease documents, which are going to be exhibits to the development agreement, also be in substantially final form, so that once we proceed, and if the city commission does in fact approve the development agreement, donation agreement, that the other documents will be ready for execution once the bidding process is completed and the city agrees to move forward based on the cost estimates at that time. With that, Mayor and Commissioner, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Thank you.
Don't go away. You want to, let's take a five-minute quick break because it could go on for quite a while here with the commentary. So five minutes and we'll resume.
Mayor, my comments are essentially Mayor yours and the vice mayor's as far as individual conversations that we had specifically about the rezoning in this particular item. You know, we have, as latest today, received communications from Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods and also from Dr. McClure that has questions about the zoning and some of the policies and procedures regarding the zoning. So that is the latest. We had conversations with Mr. Fritzl, I believe, you know, meetings with the Schwadens early in this process. But as far as individuals that deal with any of the rezoning questions, I really haven't had any at all. And as you mentioned, anybody has any questions can ask me about it. But as far as individual comments about, or discussions that I've had about this project have been very numerous throughout this community. So there's very few people I haven't talked to about this, but it looks like I'll get the rest of the comments this evening, which will be good. So we're ready.
Thank you. Mr. Cromwell?
Likewise, I've had many meetings in person, on the telephone, and various communications through email, mostly regarding the project as a whole. Zoning is part of that, but there was nothing particularly about the zoning that, you know, or really, there was nothing particularly about much of the project in general that's not part of the public record at this point anyway. So I don't have anything substantial to add in any ex parte communications.
I met with LAN, I went to the LAN meeting in July, so spoke with several regarding the rezoning itself. Just their concerns regarding the rezoning and some discussion of that. Did meet individually with Kirk McClure for some time, but nothing in those conversations or that conversation with Dr. McClure is outside of what he's put into the public record. So I don't think I've had any kind of material information come up in ex parte that's not already out there. That's...
Are there any questions from any of the public about any of our activities? Okay, thank you. And then we'll start now with public comment. Laura, I think you're first up. Can you kindly say your name? And you've already signed in, so we'll move ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Laura Ruth. I support a community rec center on the northwest side of town. I think it's needed. I think it's a good idea. I don't support the Sports Village proposal as it currently exists. As I often comment, I'll just throw it right out there that I'm kind of disturbed with the process and the order of things in regard to... process and the order of things in regard to the Sports Village proposal. Way back in May, you all voted to annex this 146 acres, and in July, at the budget meeting, you approved more than $4 million for the next two years for public funding for infrastructure development for the Sports Village site, and now it looks like we're moving toward rezoning the property. Even the LJ World noted in a recent editorial that the order of things seems a little bit backwards, and, and I guess I would agree with that. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think before you proceed with rezoning and moving forward on this project, we owe it to the taxpayers to answer more questions. I'm gonna just run through these questions, I realize you all don't necessarily have to or want to answer them tonight, I'll just throw them out there for the public record and let you think about them. I'm wondering what the assessed value of the land that is being donated by Mr. Schwada is, what, what is the assessed value of that land, and how does that number compare with the four to six million dollar infrastructure cost that will be borne by city residents? I'm wondering how much the city has paid Gould Evans and Warner Architects thus far and where that money's coming from? I'm wondering if the city has calculated the cost of providing fire and police services to the proposed development site at the Sports Village, and how much that's gonna cost annually, and where that money is gonna come from? I wonder if the city has done adequate projections to examine the worst-case scenario in terms of a loss of revenue in the event that the state economy takes a dive? And I'm wondering how such an economic downturn would affect the Sports Village finance projections as they've been given thus far? Perhaps you all saw an article in the paper last week that the state's tax collections missed expectations by about fourteen and a half million dollars in August alone. How do we know that that trend won't continue, and if and when it does, it's gonna trickle down and cause trouble for us in this community? I'm wondering if the city is prepared for cost overruns in construction of the project? Not all people agree with the cost projections that have been given in the plans that were presented thus far. I would ask that you all not proceed with rezoning until you've answered these questions. I think it would be premature to do so. This is a big and it's a risky project, and I feel like the city is really rushing to accommodate the developer over the interests and concerns of the community at large. I would ask that the city pay attention to what the taxpayers are saying. We are not sure about this project. I would ask that you reexamine the site next to Free State High School and hold off on the rezoning. Thank you.
Dicky Heckler, citizen?
I too would like to support Laura's concern about the economy. It's, it's, it took a dive, and it really hasn't come up for air, as far as I know, and it's been a long time waiting, and I think this is risky business, not knowing what, what might happen in the next few years. When I listen to Republicans, it doesn't sound too good, ever. So, I don't see any light at the end of this tunnel for quite some time. We don't know, maybe there'll be a third home loan scheme or scam that we'll have to deal with, and each time those have happened, they have shaken the economy substantially. I think we need to take those things into consideration. So, do the pros outweigh the cons on this new sports complex? Well, I've studied an analysis over and over, and I've come up with the conclusion that no, the pros don't outweigh the cons. Now, I should say that I have had a meeting with Dave Corless, and when you meet with Dave, you learn a lot of things. And I have to say that he almost had me, he's very good, and I love speaking with him. Thank you, Dave, for your time. But, in essence, my comments will be around that I think the taxpayers should come out strong for voter approval on this project. It's a lot of money, it's a lot of risk, and a lot of speculation. And as you know, if you, if you read the paper, that recently, it has come out that maybe the voters should be asked how they want to spend this money, and it came out that perhaps repealing this sales tax, either in part or all, came up. Now, I've never heard this about this particular sales tax over the years since it's been passed. I think this is something that should be probably considered seriously, as to something that has never come up that I know of since this thing has been passed. And, you know, this, this sales tax is not necessarily dedicated to the, to the Parks and Recs Department, but they've done a lot with it, a lot of good things with it, and a lot of neighborhoods have benefited because of it. So, think of it this way, though. Ten percent of this sales tax, you know, if we were thinking about how else we could use this money to benefit the community, and considering it's, you know, it's kinda shaky economic times. Say ten percent of this could be dedicated to rehab the library project, and provide operations expenses thereafter, thereby eliminating the new library tax increase. This is an opportunity to reduce taxes in our community. I don't think we should pass over an opportunity such as this. So there, again, we have to let, well, I think it'd be good to let the voter decide things like this. And another way to think about this, and you've heard this before, that perhaps we could build a nice community, a nice VOTEC center for the community. You know, higher education has been very good to Lawrence, Kansas, so, you know, why not give it some thought? And our elementary schools are in dire need of rehabilitation, we all know this, that the rehabilitation should've started probably fifteen years ago. So perhaps this, some of this sales tax could be directed at reducing the city-level property taxes, thereby offsetting any tax increase, the school district may need to rehab our, our elementary schools that somehow have been neglected over the years. And certainly, but not least, we, I think we have to understand that I have never heard any opposition to a, to a neighborhood rec center per se in northwest Lawrence. I've never heard any opposition whatsoever. So, let's build a northwest neighborhood rec center, similar to the existing rec centers, but in this case, build this one with two or three full-size courts and a walking track on the thirty-seven acres now that the city now owns next to Free State High School. You know, it doesn't need millions in infrastructure cost. And in addition to the northwest neighborhood rec center, use some of this money to, to add a second full-size court at Holcomb and East Lawrence. Oh, say thank you. Okay, so, I say that building a neighborhood rec center goes like, it, it provides adequate, equitable and conveniently located space throughout the Lawrence tax dollar area. Now, I think this is more consistent with the promise to use of the 1994 voter-approved sales tax money than a fieldhouse project. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I'm Joe Patterson. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, staff. My main concern with the rec center is not so much the rec center. My main concern is who's paying for it, and that's the taxpayers. Seventy-five percent of the taxpayers, the taxpayers in this city are gonna pay for it, but they won't be using it. I have yet to hear definite numbers that say we're gonna generate this many dollars on this project or that project from the rec center. I've heard a lot of ifs, maybe it should, or maybe it will, but I haven't heard anything that says it's definitely gonna be a moneymaker. I've been around Lawrence a long time, and I can think back about a lot of different things. For example, we've got a buzz system that everybody thought was gonna be the world's greatest, that's fell flat on its face, it's costing us, taxpayers about $3 million a year. The voters voted in the library, which is, to me, everything I've read on the new library project is, it's not gonna be a larger library, it's gonna be a larger computer center in, within the library, and a parking garage. Now, the voters voted that in, I'd say the voters, twenty-five to thirty percent of the eligible voters voted, and that's a shame for Douglas County and the city of Lawrence. There's too many things that we need to be looking at before we keep spending tax dollars, 'cause eventually, the poor taxpayer's not gonna be able to afford it all. You're also talking about a new police center, multi-millions of dollars. Now, that's not been finalized yet, but I don't think the project as it's being presented at this point is practical. If it is, let KU build it, or let private enterprise build it, but don't put it on the backs of the taxpayer. Now, I've heard a lot of reports about, well, we're so short on gymnasiums. Well, I, I go to a lot of luncheons and groups and stuff, and I have yet to hear the majority of any group I've been in supporting this project. I've got grandkids that use some of the facilities in Lawrence, which is great, and there are probably a few things we need a few more of, but we don't need this major, major undertaking. It's out, it's just, it's out of control. And, uh... The police center and that, maybe we need, but I think that there again, we need to take another look at that, but getting back to the rec center, the size of it, and what it's gonna cost the city and the city taxpayers, and that's what it falls back on, and it's not just the city, it's the taxpayers are gonna be paying for this, and majority of us will never use it. I don't think I would probably ever use it, I have no need for it, but I do know groups that will. But, we're putting an awful lot of burden on an awful lot of people, and an awful lot of people that are on fixed incomes, that don't have the flexibility, like the younger people here still making pretty good dollars and got retirement ahead of you, some of us beyond that point. And, uh, I for one, think we need to take a long, hard look at what this is gonna cost us before we progress any farther. Now, I don't think I'm surprising anybody here, 'cause the city of Lawrence is not known to be business-friendly. We've lost some good businesses because we didn't want them. I think we need to put more emphasis on bringing business and enterprise into Lawrence rather than just this rec center that I don't think will pay for itself. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Speaker?
Good evening, thanks for listening to all the input tonight, I think it's really important. I, I just wanted to make the point that I, I think most of us are really enthusiastic about a rec center, whether or not this is the, the kind of thing that the citizens are really wanting, I'm not so sure, and I guess I would be concerned that it's really ambitious, but tonight, I wanted you to think about this, and I, I was recollecting when I took my own kids to different events over the years, and we would go out of town, and I'm assuming this rec center would be something similar, where these kids are coming from the surrounding area, maybe just Lawrence, maybe they're spending the night, but I will tell you, in all the years I took my kids to different events, we never shopped, ever. We went to the event, we watched, I watched my kids' events, we waited, we watched other events. The people who came to these events were parents, it's not like you're recruiting interest from, you know, people watching these events, these are junior high, high school kids, and it's the parents that are committed. A lot of these people have spent a lot of money already on their uniforms, just spending the night, or just driving there is expensive. So, I, I'm not so sure about this notion of the draw, and even if you encourage and, and give them leaflets about downtown, honestly, I, I never went downtown to any of the places I went. We stayed at the location and ate fast food, and that was it. So, I, I, I hope you'll think about that, I'm not so sure it, it's going to be such a festive kind of thing, I think it's a focus on your kids' event. The other thing, while, you know, we did stave off a downtown mall or a mall, I think we all know that most of the retail is already on Iowa Street. So, I'm concerned, I recall Penny's being downtown, Penny's is no longer downtown, Pier One's no longer downtown, Maurice's recently closed, I know Old Navy on Iowa Street is going out of business, Sears is going out of business. So, I, I am really concerned about the retail. I think the jewel we have, the interest that's different than any community, is our downtown. And I like some of the new projects we have, I wanna see the Oriad Hotel succeed, I wanna see the other hotels do well downtown, but I think it's our downtown, surrounding community and areas close to the university. But anyway, rec center, yes, but perhaps I, I just really would like you to really think about this a little longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
My name's Pat Katie, thank you for all the work you've done, and I appreciate the fact that the people wanna have a place to play and cardio, all that stuff. When I wrote a letter to the Journal World about a month and a half ago, and I've written quite a few letters over my years here, I got more people stopping me on the street, in the library, in the bank, and the tennis court, telling me how much they agreed with my letter. And I wanna talk a little bit tonight about the elephant in the room that no one's talking about, and that is the boondoggle that this is for the developers. We're going to build infrastructure, we're gonna build roads, we're going to spend millions of dollars, and who's gonna benefit, besides the people at the rec center? The developers, who are also going to then put in a shopping center, and apartments, and houses. If we hadn't provided, if we didn't provide that for them, they'd have to pay for it themselves, at least part of it. The man who described the process by which this development, this, the rec center was, was approached, clearly said, you were working on the thirty-seven acre or the forty-acre place near Free State, near the Walmart, you were working on that, he was designing for that, and then all of a sudden, Thomas Fritzl and Schwada came forward and said, oh, here's some money, I mean, here's some land. It was like a gift horse. I think you need to look the gift horse in the mouth and see what really we're getting for that. I propose that the big victors here, the big winners here, are the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katie. Next, please.
Good evening, I'm Stephen Kaylee, I live in the states of Northwood, just north of the projec, uh, the project. I'm gonna comment on some of the topics we've discussed with the city manager, and the planner, and the architect as well. I think the rec center's a good idea, I think the city needs it. We've been working very closely with the architect, architects, and had some nice meetings and some nice results. They've listened to us, I think that's been very positive. I do have, still have some concerns, and those are some of the same concerns we've had since we first started talking with each other, and that is, is there any way we could put the site plan back up? Is that possible?
Sure.
Thank you. This has changed a little bit, I, Paul did email this to us a few days ago, and one of the things that concern us is, is the... And one of the things that concern us is the shift in the stadium. I understand there's some requirements with the NCAA and so forth. But one of my main concerns is the walking path so close to our property lines there. We have no real defined buffer zone. We do on the berm. I think that's fantastic. We're very pleased with that. But what has changed since the last site plan we've seen is that, how close the walking trails are. I'm not opposed to walking trails. I think that's fantastic and my family will probably use them. But I guess this, how close they are to our property lines. Some other concerns that have been ongoing are obviously, and we all know this, about, you know, the hours of operation and the lighting and some of the noise pollution. I think the whole, we're all for the, or, I don't want to speak for all of my neighbors, but a majority of them are okay with the rec center. I think when the whole KU dynamic adds a whole nother element to it that I think we're not crazy about, but I think there's been some nice designs going on to help accommodate some of the issues. But there's still work to be done. I've heard that possibly a proposed additional 10 acres possibly being donated. We would like to know where that 10 acres is going to be and how that's going to affect the site plan. Is that going to push things more towards the south? What is that going to be used for? Also, as we've talked about in the past, the hours, the hours of operation as far as the lighting and the times of the year. Also, if this all goes through and the construction starts, the hours of operations of the construction itself. And, you know, is it going to be 24/7 work being done or is there going to be a cutoff time for construction hours? Our access road right now is East 900, which runs north to south, parallel to K-10. We've been told that most likely, at least early on, that will, that it will stay with a minor adjustment towards the south. Our concern is eventually as growth goes to the west is we would prefer obviously 1663 Road to remain a no outlet at either end. I don't think any of us are too concerned about which end is closed off. That would, and also appropriate signage, as we've talked with the city planner and Paul and Mr. Corlis about appropriate signage. We know it's a public road, but really it's just our homes back there and there's not really a necessity for a lot of people to be wandering back there. Another element I thought about as well when you start talking about the construction of the rec center is, Mr. Schum, you brought up the fact of the green factor. I would really like to see how much of this rec center, the green factor involved, like the, you know, has all of the, like HVAC, that, those sort of elements, has geothermal, these types of green factors been thought about?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to wrap up now, please.
And I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Gwen Klingenberg, President of the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods. First of all, I, my side of town is very happy with the idea of a rec center because we believe in equity. We've got rec centers throughout the community. It would be nice to be equal. So we appreciate that. I also want to thank the mayor for deferring on the zoning, but I would like to see that the zoning is deferred until, as he said, and I didn't know this, so I appreciate this, that we actually got a final plan. We know what we're going to do. And if we don't pick this spot, because we're looking at two others now, we've got three in the total, if the paper's accurate, it's accurate, okay. I didn't know, so. I just wanted to make sure that if we don't pick this spot, that we seriously consider going back to the industrial that was zoned there in the first place. Because we just spent several years fighting to get a large acreage of industrial. And I have to admit, I wasn't exactly pro-industrial and all this kind of stuff. I still have questions about industrial and manufacturing, I will tell you this. But we went through a lot of work to do that. And if we only picked this site because we were given free land and we find another spot, then I wish you would consider not supporting the zoning at all. Something Scott said earlier about this is a done deal, we're going to do this, this is being done, led me to believe that maybe there was something thinking beyond that. No, thank you. Appreciate that. A few weeks ago, I asked, sent an email to all of you and the wonderful city manager there. And I had some questions and I was promised answers. When we had this discussion, I haven't had any. Some of them have to do with the retail at the northwest corner was going to be sports related. Well, across the street on the northeast corner, we've got a large area of marketable retail, commercial. My concern is, and I've talked to the manager and I talked to Commissioner Carter and a couple other people, and I was left to believe that if the retail didn't happen on the northwest corner, the taxpayer could get stuck paying that TIF. So I would like to know if there are any kind of agreements being made in the marketing of this corner, how it's going to be marketed. If we leave it strictly sports related, I can't see you selling as much of that as a Lowe's or something else or a Menards or whatever on the northeast corner, which will help the northeast corner. It'd be great for the northeast corner to have the sports village. But I can't see it actually helping the northwest corner if we don't find some kind of agreements to market the northwest corner at least equally to the northeast corner. I also would like to know if you do pick this particular site, why it was better than the other two sites? And I guess the other thing is, I'm not really seeing KU's gung-ho involvement in this. I mean, one of the reasons the sports villages are failing throughout the community, throughout the country is because it's not being managed well. We sort of have to invent events. But KU's paper, the paper said that KU can't help market. So are we looking at hiring personnel to try to market or what are we going to do to see to it that the public side is protected if the private side fails? And that's one of my biggest concerns right there. How are we going to protect the rec center, the public side, if the other side fails? What do we have in place to see to it? Now, I know a lot of people are concerned about the rec center part paying for itself. Well, the other rec centers don't either. And I don't expect them to. I expect it to handle the way we handle all the other rec centers because it's the cities, it's parks and rec. That's not my concern. My concern is protecting that in case the other side. Just how tightly are we tied? How committed is KU on this? I think it's really important before we really go too much farther that we don't just say Bill Self is going to give us a million dollars and the KU's behind it because I'm not seeing it, I'm not hearing it. I've actually heard, if we don't do this fast, they might go and do another project later. So I think it's really important that we get them tied into this a little, a lot stronger than they are. And thank you.
Thank you.
I signed onto a list and I wasn't quite sure where that was in the whole scheme of things in deciding where we were going to speak. Hank Booth, Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. I'm surprised frankly that I'm the first of, I know several people here in the room who do want to speak very positively about the potential for this facility. Because the first time that I heard it and the first time that it kind of started to go and build in my thought process, the first words, the first word that came into my mind was, wow. What a natural fit for the city of Lawrence in this town, with the University of Kansas in this town, to have an opportunity to partner with the athletic department and really all of KU in putting together a top-notch athletic venue that this community can share for decades to come. It was, I mean, just, that is fantastic. And then, as we heard the different plan, parts of the plan unfold, it just multiplied. The opportunity to build a top-notch facility for residents and especially for our kids to top in, to be able to tap into the increased taxes that visitors to this community will pay as they come to visit here. And yes, Candace, I know you may not have gotten out to shop, but if people are here for three or four days or even two days, they're going to go somewhere and spend some money in Lawrence, Kansas while they're here. To be able to combine all of that together was simply tremendous. Now, I understand there are a lot of details to be worked out and there will be many more places that we kind of go off track for a little while. And I admire your commitment to continuing to open up the public dialogue because I think there needs to be a great deal more. The second thing that has come to me as we go along with this unique partnership with KU, I never expected KU to market our facility or even need to market their facility. We have a tremendous University of Kansas relays that has been run on an outmoded track facility and still brings in hundreds of athletes every year for that KU relays that's been going on for decades. And they still come here even though the track itself is subpar and it doesn't fit what's necessary for records or anything else. But hundreds, thousands of people come to Lawrence every spring for those relays. And when we put a top-notch track in, that's even tilted slightly to make sure that it conforms to all the things that are necessary for major events to be held here, there'll be thousands more that attend not only the relays but other track and field activities as well. And I didn't expect Bill Self to go out and promote use of either one of those facilities when I first heard about this. I suppose we could ask him to quit winning 30 games a season and that might help not put Lawrence, Kansas on the map when it comes to having basketball tournaments here. We could ask David Booth to please take that, that rules of basketball somewhere else so the university's bringing thousands of people just to come and look at that who might also be attracted to Lawrence for the opportunity to do both in one stay. Won't come, but I doubt that that will happen. And finally, I think that, I want to say this as somebody who has been in on these discussions of all kinds, could we just for a moment quit this thing about what the developers will gain? My goodness gracious, folks, you look around this town at the things that we have. It's ironic that they named the Oriad at the same time that they were saying those developers. And when I think of the amount of money being invested in our community by the developers, in this case, one particular family, on projects like the Oriad that we can see proudly from about any place in Douglas County, it starts to get me a little bit upset. So let's make sure the developers are given some credit for what they've built in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Next, please. I don't know who's next. Just go ahead then. State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Allison Robey and I'm just a citizen of Lawrence. And I would like to state that I am personally on fixed income. So every time a new huge product comes up in town that I'm going to have to help support, it frightens me a little bit and I don't feel like the public really has enough input into these projects. It feels like it's speeding ahead and the developers are happy. And now Fritzl wants to not only decide to get into the bidding process, but they're also going to decide who builds it. So I find that interesting conflict of interest. But, you know, what I'd like to say something just historically. I used to live by Berchem Park and KU decided that they were going to put in the boathouse, which ended up being a fantastic project. And it's great to see people using the river and I think it turned out great. But as far as, you know, the public that comes to that park, they can't go into that facility and use the restroom. You know, I feel like we do these things in partnership with KU, but KU doesn't pay for them. My recollection is that Lawrence is leasing that space in Berchem Park to KU for a dollar a year for 99 years. I don't understand why somebody who has such a big revenue doesn't have to pay like this little person here. That upsets me as a person in the community. You know, I think it's pathetic that they did all of that building. They were supposed to also within that, since it was a city project, to have art in that space, which never happened. So it makes me leery of things that KU are going to be involved in that the public may be squeezed out of because what KU needs. You know, I personally don't understand why KU doesn't fix their own track. They have tons of money to do something like this. I don't understand why we, the citizens of Lawrence, are going to build huge facilities for KU to use. And by the way, they're not going to be able to help do anything to help promote it. So it's, the onus is going to be on us to promote it and to make it work. And like the last speaker, well, the one before said, you know, what if, what if things fail and we're left all holding the bag? I really don't understand, and I would like to know from you all tonight, do. Any of you know why KU doesn't have to have a huge assist in this? So, I mean, it appears that two-thirds of the project is basically hugely for their use. Why isn't KU asked to pay for, I don't know, part of the infrastructure that goes to it or anything? Do you guys know that answer?
If you kindly continue, we'll answer any questions we want to after the.
Let's see. I also would be interested in knowing if anything is being done. I hope that it is LEED certified and I wonder if there's anything geothermal or solar, wind power going to be used to help, you know, pay for some of the energy that that place is going to use. You know, I, I know that a lot of people are interested in sports and I'm completely for a rec center. I think, you know, we do need one on that side of town. I think that's good. There is very little for junior high and high school kids to do in town and if they're not interested in sports, that's a huge bunch of money that's going that way. I don't ever hear of any project that's, you know, kind of alive for that segment of the population. They kind of turn into mall rats and walk up and down, you know, Mass Street and go into stores and probably don't spend much money. You know, so I, I just don't feel like a huge population is being served by the enormity of this project. I think a rec center is great, but I don't understand why it needs to be so huge and why KU doesn't have to enter into some kind of contract to say that they are going to help pay for this over the 20 years and help out the citizens of Lawrence. You know, that's a huge giant in town that gets away without paying much for things that they get a lot of use for. So that's my comment, so.
Thank you.
Are there ideas about KU and their, why they don't have to participate financially?
Did you want me to try to respond to it generally? Well, we've been in discussions with the University of Kansas in regards to this facility and a number of other cooperative arrangements that we have, some of them that you've highlighted. I think that we feel that it's appropriate that we install the infrastructure to serve the recreation center. I think one of the things that maybe we've stepped over this evening is is that as part of the arrangement with the existing property owners, they're going to agree toward the placement of a Transportation Development District sales tax on the property so that the city can recover some of the infrastructure costs over the life of that, of that district. I think that, one of the things that is important to understand is that the city is not paying for the KU facility itself. KU is going to pay, Bliss Sports, Bliss Sports is going to construct the facility for KU. City's not involved in financing the construction of that facility. We do believe that we will be able to enter into cooperative arrangements with KU so that we can use the facility for non-KU type events, Junior Olympics, AAU, Special Olympics, those types of things. Those events will draw people to the community. I don't think that it's necessary or appropriate that KU has to pay for the infrastructure here. That's a decision that's been, that's clearly part of the discussion base here. I do think that it's appropriate though to understand the relationship that we have with the university. I think it's very strong. You mentioned Berchem Park. That is correct, that we have leased that site to the University of Kansas Athletics for the boathouse. for the, the boathouse. We have cooperative arrangements where KU has leased property to the city at a nominal cost as well. The example that I'm familiar with is Fire Station Five and the administrative offices at Nineteenth and Iowa. That's KU endowment property, University of Kansas property. Prime location, the best location for locating the, the fire medical facility at that location. And the lease agreement for that, I think is, I think it's five dollars a year for twenty years with renewable options. So again, a nominal amount where they gave us property essentially without much public cost, and we were able to use that. So we've, we've got that type of cooperative arrangement, and I think we want to continue to do that. So that's, and that's some background, and it's clearly fair to ask those questions, but I think that there's good responses as well.
Want to move along with the next speaker, please?
Good evening. My name is Zach Bolick. Wanted to take a minute this evening and voice my support to you all, Parks and Rec, city staff, the architects, developers, and everyone else in the community that's been active in this process and voicing their opinions and expertise. It's really important, I think, for everyone involved, as well as everyone else who wants to be involved, to objectively examine the facts and to get active in the process. Clearly, this is proving to be an issue that is causing a lot of participation and conversation throughout the community, and some of which I found this to be based upon fact and is objective, in others which that I found are based upon opinion and emotion. This factual-based viewpoint, I feel, provides you all with a fair and balanced viewpoint of the citizens to which you serve. There are clearly disagreements in the community about the project itself, but I do think the overwhelming tone in the community is that there is a need for a new northwest recreation facility. So I urge you to continue to do your due diligence, listen to what's being said in the community when it's based upon fact and reality. Take the time that it will take to get this done right, and I believe that you'll hear applause throughout the city for your efforts. So thanks for your time, your leadership, and I look forward to seeing what comes of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolick. Next speaker. Has everyone signed in? If you, if you haven't and you speak, then the signup sheet's over at Diane Stoddard's desk.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Andy Pitts. All right. First of all, I want to applaud you for your process also. This is a little bit of an atypical process with this type of a project. With a developer-led process, sometimes it's not very linear where you have all the answers right away, and it's very fluid, and that's obviously obvious from the last couple of weeks and the many meetings that you've had and the many discussions and where you are this evening. So I applaud you for having those continual discussions and as you move forward on this project. There's many things that I could stand here and talk about this evening. You could talk about the sales tax and how it's currently, we're paying for it, we need to apply it to a specific project, it needs to bring to a significant project within this town. We could talk about the relationship that the city has with the University of Kansas, and I thank Hank for his comments and Dave for his comments also in that relationship. I thought back to, and a thing this summer, and the relationship that we have with the University of Kansas and the downtown and the Convention and Visitors Bureau and having the shot put in downtown, and how proud my son was to be able to see the person who won the shot put here, standing, representing our country as a shot putter in London for the United States. And I think that is an excellent opportunity that we do in our partnerships. But I want to talk about the need for this facility. If we think back to nineteen ninety-five, when this sales tax was originally passed, the vision of that sales tax was a facility just like this. It was a discussion of a community recreation center. And unfortunately, we didn't move forward with the project because we had a vocal minority. And I think it is time that others stand up and support this type of a project. We are lacking in the gym space that you've heard from Parks and Rec. Every time we have a survey, that's one of the number-one priorities that comes up. Our neighborhood recreation centers aren't neighborhood centers. They're packed in time with the programming that goes on with the one job that Parks and Rec does. Time for drop-in gym doesn't happen because they're packed with that programming. We need this type of facility to be able to free up those neighborhood facilities. We need those additional gym space that has constantly been identified in our surveys to provide additional programming for volleyball, indoor sports, whether it's football, footsall, basketball. We need those opportunities. It is not just about bringing tournaments to this facility. It is about supporting what our community needs and what our community deserves. I don't feel like we should be afraid of what other communities are also doing. Why should Lawrence sit back and wait for other communities to do things and let our people travel there? I'm a father of two very active children that participate in tournaments throughout this state and others. Our family has traveled, we've spent timeless hours and dollars, whether it's on restaurants, on gas, on lodging. When we're at these tournaments, we spend the time there. The whole team goes out, we dine together, we have fun together. That's what those tournaments are about. That's an opportunity that we can bring here to Lawrence also. So I would hate to miss another opportunity as we did earlier in nineteen ninety-five when we missed that opportunity with the community recreation center. We need this facility, and we deserve this facility, and I think it's time that the city moves forward on this type of a project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Shem, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. Nervous, sorry. I first want to say thank you.
Excuse me, could you state your name for the?
Shannon Jones. Sorry. I first wanted to start by saying thank you to all who have been involved and who have spent countless hours so thoughtfully considering this project. I speak to you tonight as a mother of a family who has chosen Lawrence as our permanent residence. My husband and I both started businesses in Lawrence, and this is where we intend on staying. I also speak to you tonight as a concerned health professional, as a dietitian who specializes in pediatric adolescent and adult weight management and obesity prevention. I assure you, I come to you tonight with a fierce passion for this project coming to fruition. I get to see firsthand the results of our community's shortcomings and the impact that they have in, in my office every week. Mayor Shem, I saw a nine-year-old last Tuesday, and she really wanted me to tell you. Her name is Aria. I told her I was going to speak to you tonight, and she was very excited for me to tell you her story. She is in the ninety-ninth percentile for height and weight. What that means in simple terms is she's at a severe risk for heart disease, diabetes, other existing condition, health conditions. As a matter of fact, her body is already telling us she's there. She has high cholesterol, she has high triglycerides, and she has high blood sugar. And I could start to throw out some pretty impressive statistics on how much that would cost us. And, and I do say "us" because Aria is on a Kansas-funded health program. I guess my perspective tonight is, is maybe a little bit different from what we've heard. We've heard a lot about cost, and we've heard a lot about taxpayers' dollars and where this is going. And tonight, I want to give you a different perspective, and that is, what is the cost of not doing a project such as this? And I want to focus on that. I was recently involved with a group of obesity prevention specialists with Michelle Obama's Let's Move Initiative. Our job as obesity experts were to create solutions to help fight our current obesity epidemic. We broke out into task groups regarding research needed, practice change, policy change, and then we presented our solution ideas to Michelle Obama's staff from Washington, D.C. It was a fascinating experience, and I walked away from that four-day meeting with ideas and a better understanding about what can be done at a local level in our communities to help facilitate change. We know through research already that our environment dictates behavior. Does our community offer access to change behavior for the better? Does it have shortcomings that set families up for failure? Does our community make it easier for families to live a healthy lifestyle, or do we make it too easy for them to fall into a life of unhealthy choices because it's easier and they have better access? As obesity experts, we know that the average child, average child today gets about two to three hours of physical activity a day. You and I got twenty-one to twenty-three hours in our generation. I could read off incredibly sad statistics from the CDC and, you know, go on and on about what the lack of activity, activity is leading to in our society, but instead, I'm going to wrap this up by going back to Aria. Aria and I were working on goal-setting, and one of the things that we know through, as obesity experts through research, is that there are goals that these families can adopt that can actually help these kids maintain their weight and grow into their weight as they get taller versus continuing to gain weight every year. And so we were, I give the kids the opportunity to select the goals that they wanted to work on, and Aria selected that she wanted to work on at least one hour of physical activity a day. That's a great goal. Her mom proceeded, as we went through their lifestyle and what was feasible, to tell me that she had recently tried to enroll in a dance class at the rec center, but that it was full and she was put on a waiting list. So I think we've talked a lot about the, the court space shortage, but what about Aria? She wants to dance, and it would clearly help her meet her one hour of day and love doing it. So let's assume for a second that we're all on the same sheet of music, and we really are gung-ho on this rec center, and we put our differences aside. Clearly, there's this other component of whether KU be involved or whether we open this up where it's a size that tournaments could be played. I guess, you know, I simply look at all of that as icing on the cake. It, it is just another way to benefit this community. And, and I guess I just get, my blood pressure, there's no telling what it is, listening to some of these speeches tonight, I get frustrated when we lose sight and we talk about cost. What, what's the cost of not doing this?
Ms. Jones, you're going to have to wrap up. I'm sorry.
Okay. So if we take a step back, this is what I see. I see movement. I see positive behaviors. I see families spending time together. I see moving, fun, they are not sitting in front of a screen. I also seen teens who are not congregating behind dillens getting into trouble because they are bored and don't have a place to land. I see this as a positive option to meet that unserviced need in our community. And so we have a chance to do this right. We have a chance to make a difference in the lives of our families and kids in Lawrence, and a project such as this helps this community come one step closer to combating our obesity epidemic on a local level. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow Commissioners. My name is John Ross. I'm an independent business owner here in Lawrence. I'm also the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. First, I want to commend you for taking the time and effort to listen to everybody that has stepped up and spoken. I think all the questions that you've heard this evening are there to be answered. So the things that, that I really appreciate about our community is the ability to step up, air out what those questions are, and have you guys listen to it. So commending the Commission on taking this time, I commend you on your vision for the future and what that can be for the City of Lawrence. The willingness for the city to work with, in partnership with private industry and KU, I think that's phenomenal, and I think it bodes well for our future as well. I had two kids that are grown now. When I was coaching back throughout the nineties, gym space was an issue then, so badly that at six o'clock in the morning, we were practicing basketball in the Hillcrest Gym slash cafeteria. That's how challenged we were for space then. So I see that this would be a huge help in having gym space for our local coaches and teams to play. Support moving forward on this project with full due diligence that you've displayed to this point. So this project has a strong opportunity to bring athletes of all ages and different types of sports to our community, for us to showcase our community, to showcase KU. And I, I say, carry on. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Bill Reynolds. I live at eight twenty-seven North Seventeen Ten Road. That's about a mile northwest of the proposed center. You should know that I don't support the current plan for the rec center. It has nothing to do with our residents. My wife and I have enjoyed the rural setting in which we've lived for about thirty years, but we also realized as soon as they started K-ten that at some point in time, that was going to change. Also, I supported the commercial development and the island annexation, primarily because you have either sales tax, property tax, or commercial taxes. If you don't have any commercial business, then the other two have to, to bear that burden. I just have several concerns I would like the Commission to address in their deliberations. The first was an issue brought up by Roger Morningstar, and that was the population of Lawrence. I think that has to be a concern because we need to have a local population that supports the rec center and is willing to help foot the bill for the use of that rec center. If we don't, then we're depending on the events that are brought into town to provide revenue through the hotel and restaurant sales taxes. If the population doesn't grow, any retail development in that area really is just going to siphon off business from other locations in town. And just on a personal note, I say I try not to shop at businesses who have added the additional sales tax because of their special tax, Asian District. There are too many other businesses providing the same services, some of them from the same company, where I can shop and not pay that additional sales tax. So I think population and whether or not we can support the rec center is a serious issue. Second issue would be, what is KDOT's involvement in the infrastructure out there? I attended a couple of meetings that KDOT held regarding the improvement of Highway Forty all the way out to Can Walk Corner. They really have an excellent plan for softening the hills, widening it to a four-lane divided street. It would be wonderful. I wish we had had it for the last thirty years. Unfortunately, their plan is a forty-year plan because they don't have the money to put into that project right now. But I think the public should know, is there any KDOT involvement there and to what extent? The final issue would be Lawrence's financial ability to support the project. Several years ago, the Journal World ran an editorial about determining wants from needs. And we have to remember that if we're going to undertake this project, is that going to detract from our ability to pay for the needs of the community? I, I, I think I'd say, yeah. I'd want a nice facility. I don't know if we need a world-class facility. I also think that Tom Keegan and Jerry Harper have offered some interesting suggestions regarding the KU facility, regarding the rec center, that should be considered. But, you know, our nation just passed a sixteen trillion-dollar debt level today. We've got forty trillion dollars in unfunded liability for, for Social Security and Medicare. And Lawrence doesn't exist in a vacuum. These bills are all going to come due, and we're all going to suffer because they're going to have to be paid. So I'd like the City Commission to give that serious consideration, and at the, at the end of that process, please print a simple statement that shows what you anticipate the cost to be, how much of that will be paid by the taxpayer, how much of that will come from other sources, and what you expect the revenue to be and the sources that will provide that revenue. I think it would help all of us make a better decision on whether or not we can support the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, staff, and whoever's left here tonight. My name's Melinda Henderson, and I can't believe I have five minutes. I only prepared for three. So some of this may be stream of consciousness. But I've taken copious notice.
Three minutes is okay with us. Don't get us wrong.
Oh, I don't know. I, don't sell, don't sell me short, Mayor Shem. I, I have really enjoyed listening to the comments tonight, and I actually wasn't sure that I was, was going to speak until the very end. But the comments I've heard have, have been really enlightening. What I hear universally is that everybody supports the idea of a rec center, and you can count me among those people. What I haven't heard is a consensus on a sports village, and that's where my concerns lie. And my perspective has been echoed by, by several of the And my perspective has been echoed by several of the speakers tonight, none of whom I know personally. I think Mr. Patterson, is that your name? And Mr. Reynolds, both brought up really salient points that I have some concerns about. And Shannon, I don't know if she's still here, she spoke about Aria and the obesity epidemic. And I think that that's definitely a concern and how can this rec center, sports village, make our kids healthier? As you all know, I live on the, as I call it, the poor side of town. I have been here before speaking to you about issues in my neighborhood and you all have been very receptive and very helpful in helping us get those resolved. But it took a lot of time and effort to get there. And I see kids in my streets skateboarding every day because they don't have a skateboard park near them. We have East Lawrence Rec Center down the street, which, as everybody will agree, you know, is fairly full most of the time. And it's my understanding that if we build this rec center, that will alleviate, you know, some of the problems. And I think that's great. Boys and Girls Club is over off of Haskell. How are those kids going to get to this rec center, however many miles away it is from Haskell and Sixth? Think of the travel time involved, getting there and coming back. Are they really going to be able to participate in activities out there? That's a real concern of mine. I want to tell you a little bit about the person I work for. He's a small business owner, industrial design manufacturer, and he couldn't be here tonight because he's coaching soccer at YSI. And he coaches a lot of teams. And I have talked with him about this project and tried to give him all the material I could come up with. And he thinks this rec center would be a Taj Mahal and he would love to see that because he totally agrees that we need more court space and field space. But he doesn't want to drive all the way out there. And he lives, you know, on the west side of town. He said, "That's not centrally located. Why aren't they considering the property at Free State?" And I really want to try to let you all come and talk with him because I think he has some good insight from a perspective that you maybe not have heard yet. Finally, I just want to tell you personally, I've been back here 16 years since I came to school here in the 70s. And in that time, I haven't always agreed with the decisions that the city commission has made, but I've never felt frightened by any of your decisions until now. This project scares the bejesus out of me. I expect four more years of gridlock with our national government. No matter who our president is, it's going to affect my bottom line. The new and quite novel budget for the state of brown Pakistan goes into effect in a few short months. And there are some serious questions about how that's going to work out and what ramifications will be felt at the local level and that's really going to affect my bottom line.
Melinda, you're gonna have to wrap up, okay.
Speaking of the local level, we have a police facility upgrade coming sooner rather than later and a school bond proposal on the very near horizon. And we still pay sales tax on food. So, please take into consideration that sales tax is very important to a lot of people on fixed incomes in this town. And I want to see it used wisely. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. There'll be other opportunities as we have the agenda items that come before us. As I said, it's my feeling we should continue this item, the land use questions on the agenda for tonight until a later date. That later date could be as early as next Tuesday night or as late as a week from Tuesday night. It's probably more likely that it's gonna be a week from Tuesday night before all the agreements are worked out to a position where they're presentable to the public in somewhat of a final form. Is there any comment on that either from our council or from the city manager?
We've got a lot of people here who've got questions or comments.
I really appreciate everyone coming in and sharing their concerns with us. That's what, that's why I wanted to have this tonight, so we gave everybody ample opportunity to state where they're at. There's still a lot of people out there who haven't expressed themselves, of course, and they probably never will or will at a later date. But anyway, it is helpful to get the concerns on the table, to understand what people are concerned about and helps give us direction, so. The other, Mike?
One of the questions that I have right now, Mayor, is would it be appropriate, I guess, one of the things that I started looking at is, and I want to thank staff for putting together, you know, a little bit of information for us. It's a little spreadsheet of various sites are involved in this project. But one of the things that I want to make sure of, and we've heard a lot this evening about the need for recreation space, we understand all of that, and trying to meet, you know, the basic services that we provide. We are a service provider and I think that I've learned this more and more since this project's come along. But one of the things that I know is that as we look at the site that is at Overland and Waukerusa, Dave, the information that you provide, I want to make sure that I understand that's right. It's 29 acres at that site and that staff estimates the extra costs involved of off-site costs of the development there. It's approximately $200,000 for the signal at Waukerusa and Overland. That's your estimate on the additional costs of this project, is that correct?
That's what we have estimated. Again, that site does not accommodate KU. That site is strictly for a recreation center and parking lot.
I understand that, but what I want to be fair about, I'm gonna ask this question. Can that site accommodate a building, a recreation building, similar to what's being proposed at the property across K-10?
We think that we can get the square footage there. I mean, we're gonna have to, we may have to have a different level of design, but we think we can get the square footage there and adequate parking.
Okay. Would it be appropriate, Mayor and other commissioners, to, as we look at this, and I think as we're comparing project to project, is it appropriate to look at an equal-sized building at this site here so that we can compare that to the other location that we had and be able to make a decision at that point on whether the additional costs? And I gotta say this, I appreciate the work that individuals that have stepped forward, the Schwatter family, Fritzl family, everybody that's stepped forward, University of Kansas and the Athletic Corporation, of being able to want to do partnership and stuff. But I gotta go back to one thing and that is that, you know, we are a service provider here. This is a basic service for the city of Lawrence, you know, the recreation needs. I understand all that, but I want to make sure that, you know, as we're trying to meet our recreation needs, how much farther do we go in trying to put together the partnership? So, if we can look at putting a similar building, a similar-sized building on this site, then the decision that we have to make is, can we afford or should we be affording the opportunity of the partnership and the additional costs that would be involved in moving across K-10 Highway? So, I would like to see us do a similar, you know, a simple sketch on the property that we own, if that's possible, of being able to put that building on that site. Without slowing down the decision process, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Well, obviously, we have been interested in all three sites because we had staff, directed staff to put it into a matrix so that we could see where we were at. And we tried to have them come back with pros and cons on each site such that we could quantify it in some way and then make intelligent decisions. I don't see anything wrong with looking at that site additionally to see what's possible there. I don't think there's been, it's not been looked at in terms of engineering to any great degree. It's been looked at as, I think, probably an overhead overview and so...
What we've looked at is where utilities are on the site, street network, and then the square footage. We haven't done any of the site investigation like we have on the Gateway Edition. But we can make some assumptions and you can draw conclusions from that.
That's fine with me if that's a pleasure. You can never have too much information on this. This is a size, a large project. It's gonna be with the community for many years and to do it right is most important. But I, once again, the one, one thing that that site won't accommodate is the KU presence there. And I guess at some point, while it's a cost, KU is a cost, you can argue, I guess, that KU is a cost to the city in terms of this project, but what benefit do they bring to the city in terms of them being our major employer and them attracting the level of sports participation that they do? So, at a dollar and cents equation, you're gonna, it's gonna cost you more to have KU co-join you in this activity. But there again, they are the largest employer in the city and they are, they do draw the greatest crowds to the town. So, I mean, that's some of the things we'll have to weigh. But I think it's prudent to look at that site, I really do.
Well, I think if we're gonna compare apples to apples here, and I think that's all this is, is place, you know, the proposed building or the square footage of the proposed building on the site that we already own, the utilities are already there, the street network's there, all of the things that are there. And then, you know, then the decision that we have to make, how important is the partnership and everything that goes along with it? That's what it's about, I think.
Sure. Any comments on that?
Well, we do, we do have the matrix that we were talking about that, I mean, as far as having them sketch it there, I mean, there may need to be tweaks to this to make it fit in that other, but I don't know that we need to have staff spending time on actual drawings at that site. I really have been interested in this partnership with KU, myself, and, you know, I think we know, we've been told by staff and I feel comfortable that they, we can do that at the Walmart site. That's probably good, I mean, that's good enough for me at this point. But the matrix is what I think is very important and people have mentioned, you know, maybe you should be comparing these side by side. Well, of course we are, you know, and it's, it is difficult because it's fluid to have all that information out there because frankly, a lot of this is happening, you know, before we get it out there. I think we do need the public to see the matrix as well at some point here, but not too soon because we need to tweak these numbers and make sure that we're confident and comfortable that site by site, our comparisons are pretty close so that people can see the methodology behind the decision here. Because there's definitely, I think it makes the decision much easier for us and I think the public will understand it better at some point if we can share, share that side-by-side information too. I don't know about having staff go draw on the site off Overland Drive is really necessary if we know that it's an option.
Basic footprint.
I feel like I can say this, that I just came from a KU event for this meeting tonight and I've been to like two other KU events in the last two or three days and every time I'm there, the upper echelon of the administration keeps asking about where we're at with this particular facility. They are very, and this is not the athletic department, this is the administration. They're very concerned that, and they are very hopeful that this goes through and that we are partners with them. They see it as a, such an important part to be unified with the city. I believe that they see recruiting and retention as an opportunity here. It's gonna bring a lot of people to town that would have never, ever come. When they're here, they're gonna have an opportunity to travel across the KU campus and visit parts of the KU operation. And they're very, very enthusiastic about this cooperative agreement. How you put that into dollars and cents, I don't know, but I do know one thing, this city is very, very dependent on the wealth and health of KU and how it attracts students in the future and how it develops. So, it's an important part of their long-term planning in terms of recruitment and I can't underscore that enough. So, there is a cost to it and it's not gonna be a big surprise. There is a cost and we're picking up the cost, but I do believe we're doing something for KU that will benefit the city in the years to come in spades. So, that's a statement I'd like to get in the record. Anything?
Yeah, I, it's great comments. I tried to type as many as I could. I started trying to read my handwriting during these meetings and realized that I gotta start writing them in large font on the computer because I can't, I can't read my notes later. There's one thing I just want to say is, the thing I got tonight was a lot of a sense of agreement that we need more recreation space in our community. So, I'm gonna hold everybody who I typed their names and information on. So, if this thing does fall apart and we want to build a rec center at Walmart, I see 100% agreement. There'll be no discussion, there'll be no discourse, it's gonna happen. So, that's the one thing I got here is, everyone says that that's what we want to do. It's in writing, I've got your names, the time you said it. So, one thing, so I'm really positive, something's gonna happen in our community, so I'm excited about that. What I really wanted to point out, and I think I want to further Bob's stance, since I came on the commission, I've noticed a change in our relationship with the University of Kansas. Bob is enjoying that change. They're inviting us into their community and we're inviting them into our community. The comment about the shot putters, I don't know how many people noticed that, but we had world-class Olympic athletes and medal winners throwing shot on A Street in our downtown. I mean, that's a great opportunity and that doesn't happen everywhere. KU is not the same without Lawrence and Lawrence is not the same without KU. It's the perfect definition of a symbiotic relationship. And all we're trying to do is see if we can deepen that relationship so that both of us can prosper in the future. I completely understand aiming high and how difficult it is. We're all really serious about spending your money. We're all really serious about keeping that money if we can. Over the last five years, all of our budgets have demonstrated a commitment to fiscal conservative, fiscal conservative budgets. But it comes to time when we gotta invest, whether it's Walmart or whether it's 1.16 miles west of there. It's not that far. We have buses that run across our community, a bus partnership, by the way, that has been deepened and enjoyed and improved because of our relationship with KU. Those are the things that we hope to do here and we're gonna, we're gonna aim high and hope that we can reach those goals. If it doesn't happen, the good thing is, we've got all of you coming in here and telling us what you do want and that's a rec center and I'm excited about that. For me, I would love to invest in our largest employer in our community because they're invested in our town. A lot of y'all own shops and stores and businesses in this community and have thrived and prospered from those students and from those teachers and from the visitors that come to this campus. And we need to all realize, we're in this together, it's not us versus them. So, if we can't get this to happen and KU decides to build their infrastructure somewhere else, they're gonna do that probably and we're gonna end up having to help them out in some way, shape, or form. So, why don't we end up investing all this money in one spot? Less parking, less disturbance in our community, you know, less, I'm not gonna say chaos, but there's gonna be a more thoughtful effort. And if it can't happen, at least we tried. But I want everyone to understand, this is about being thoughtful and I think it's been 10 months now talking about this. So, we're not rushing to judgment. We're cautiously approaching this as a team and hoping that we're gonna be able to succeed.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, I mean, 10 months on this site, years and years, and we've talked about play, we've talked about, I mean, this is, this is an amazingly immense need in our community. It's something too, that when I, when I look back and I think, you know, why, you know, why I sit up here, you know, on Tuesday nights and, you know, it's not for the money and it's not for the love mail I get. It's for trying to do what's right in the community and it's just, you know, I think of Lawrence and, you know, one of the things I think of is, you know, that we had this image in our head of Lawrence as a young, vibrant, healthy, you know, kind of community and we're out there doing, you know, doing that... And we're out there doing, you know, doing that, that sort of stuff that, that is characterizing those sorts of communities. And that's, that makes us attractive to, you know, the region as a place to locate their business. And, you know, these sorts of things are important. If we try to compete with Olathe by being Olathe, we're going to lose because Olathe is better at being Olathe than, than we're ever going to be. We're Lawrence. This is a, this rec center gets at a core value of ours, which is, you know, that physical fitness. And we, we talked about the vast importance of physical fitness. And I've been working on that myself for the last few years, and, and to, and I've seen wonderful progress in my, in my, you know, with myself. Better shape than I've ever been in. And I want to encourage that throughout our community. Now, whether it's, whether it's this site, which has the added, you know, benefit of a KU relationship, deepening a KU relationship, which is, which is another thing that makes Lawrence Lawrence and not Olathe. We have that relationship with KU. It's been so much better than it ever has been. If we can encourage that here, this is, this is another great opportunity for us to, to again, be our, be ourselves in this site. If that doesn't work, we've got a lot of complex agreements to, to come up with yet. And we'll, we'll see those soon, and we'll get that in the community. I'm not here to say, I don't know what those look like yet. They're, they're going to have to be done right in order for, for it to be a win-win for the community, but I, I hope it is. Regardless, we've got to have the, you know, something for the, for the health of our community. And I'm looking forward to, to, you know, wherever that might be, having that happen. I think it's a definite, bold, and impressive stroke for our community if we can put all this together in one site. And, you know, I think that's going to really say something about who, who we are as a community and our, and our getting at those, again, those core values. So I'm, I'm really hopeful. Again, I am anxiously awaiting the, those, those documents and hoping that, that we're able to put that all together. But this is, this is a project I am very excited about. We will get it. I think we'll be able to get something done regardless because it gets at something that we all know that is important to us. Hopefully, we'll, we'll see it all soon.
Yeah, I just, I guess one thing, I definitely still want to see this as a joint effort with KU leveraging that relationship. And so we, we, we have two sites that we're looking at that, that would leverage that relationship. And I'm hopeful we'll refine our matrix to a point that the, the decision can become more obvious here pretty quickly. Unfortunately, we don't have all, all of the other documents that pertain to the, to the Schwada site at this time. And so there's another variable we're, we're waiting on now, but they're, they're there. We're just, we just got them recently, so unfortunately, we can't speak to them too much just yet. But one thing that did come up was the, you know, the university's inability to market the facility. And I, I was asked about this the other day. And the, as long as it's the same rules as every other college out there, we have the same advantages we had if we, if every college could market their facilities. The same advantages we have are the traditions of basketball that we have here, are the winning success and reputation. There's a tournament out there, there's certainly no rules against it. I would guess that Coach Self and others will be pretty visible at these tournaments. And there's not anybody out there doing tournaments that doesn't know that. So the fact that they're not going to be on the phone calling to say, "Hey, can you book this tournament?" I, I really think has very, very little impact on just how much we can leverage the history of basketball in Lawrence in comparison to any other community out there. And so I just wanted to point that out as something that I, I really don't have a concern about at all. Even though early on, I did think we could pick up the phone and make that call. As long as everybody's playing by those same rules, we still have the exact same advantages we had in the beginning, so. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? So I presume the pleasure of the commission is to continue this for either to when the documents are in final form, that they can be presented to the public. And hopefully, at the latest, that will be a week from, or two weeks from tonight. So I don't have the date on that. Two weeks from tonight is, today's the fifth, four nineteenth, huh? Something like that, twentieth, nineteenth, anyway.
It's the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah.
Eighteenth.
Right. Your meeting on the eleventh. Well, I'll be in contact with Gary Anderson tomorrow. And if we've got the documents finalized tomorrow and we're ready to read them and all that kind of stuff, we'll have, we'll have them on next week. If not, then it'll be the eighteenth. And it's my understanding that you want us to provide the, the matrix and a footprint map of the twenty-nine acres as well. So we'll have that ready whenever we put it on the agenda.
Okay, that's correct. Any other instructions for staff? Okay, thanks, staff. Staff has a comment?
I would just add, it's, it's helpful to go to a date certain for our notice requirements. We do have a notice issue on the conference.
We're done on that.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've conducted the hearing on that, so we don't have to continue.
Okay.
It's a good reminder. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks everyone for being here, and there'll be more to follow. And as soon as we get the final form of those agreements, we'll release them to the public for everyone to read, so.
Do we need a motion to continue it, Dave?
No, I think you just continue it at the eleventh or the eighteenth.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think I'll let, I think I'll let everybody leave before I ask if they want any public comment.
I'll be right back.
We, we should get up like, like we're, like we're getting out of here too. I'm going to stretch. Yeah. David's closer. He, he got it. There goes one. At this time, we'll entertain public comment.
All right.
See, there one left on us, that's too bad. Next item on the agenda then will be the future agenda items.
Mayor Commissioners, we are going to have our bond and note sale next week. We'll also put the debt guidelines back on. And we've got the northeast sector plan next week. We also have on the, on the calendar that you all looked at when we were looking at the recycling collection service requirements that we set out, and we've had that, had those public meetings. And next Tuesday is also the time to have that back on the agenda according to the timeframe that we, that we had set out. So that's what we've got so far for, for next week. I think we also have a, what, a public hearing. We're going to consider allowing the sale of alcohol for the color run. So it'll be a busy meeting next Tuesday, perhaps other items as well.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Let's get out of here. Oops. Any, any commission items this time? Calendar items?
Just quickly, Commissioners, we are not, of course, meeting on Christmas, December twenty-fifth, nor on Tuesday, January the first, New Year's Day. What I'd like to propose is that we do not meet the week of the, of December twenty-third. Our last meeting of this year would be December the eighteenth. That would give us three meetings in December. We, we like to pay bills, probably go ahead and, and issue those, those claims. And what we'd like to be able to do is have you then approve those on a, on a short meeting, like on January the third. I don't know what people's travel schedules are over Christmas and holidays.
I'll, I'll be here on the third.
But we'll probably write that up so that you can approve it, maybe, or consider it next week. If I can have three Commissioners here on the third to, to pay bills.
Two.
Or phone in.
We'll manage.
Yes, sir, third of January twenty thirteen. Okay, so I'm here, I'm seeing three. So we'll just have that on your calendar to cancel those meetings and approve just having a short pay bill meeting on January the third. That gets us through the holiday season and doesn't disrupt that, that week too much. Thanks. The rest of the calendar items, just be sure if you're interested in the Taste of Lawrence or the Foundation Breakfast and all those good things, let Bobby know, he should get you a ticket. There is a public meeting, I think that may be new, on the listing of Jim's public meeting that K-Dot is hosting on the K-10 Bob Village Parkway interchange there on Monday, September twenty-fourth. Anticipate, good public comments, maybe some comments about some of the road network in back to the east as well, so we're going to have city staff there.
Where's that at?
Langston Hughes. It's not into zero, it's a good, a good, it's pretty well.
Twenty-fourth?
Yes, twenty-fourth. Five o'clock, I think it's going to be more of an open house type format.
Just say five. Say five, yeah.
Five o'clock.
Okay, anything else? And we've reached that time in the meeting, that's our...